I applaud your allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this day and we ask that you watch over us and guide us as we do the people's business. May everyone be led with a pure heart. In your name, amen.
If I can have the floor computer, please. First order of business this evening is the approval of the agenda, including the additional items for consideration. There's one additional item for consideration this evening. It's the FY 21, FY 22 Revenue Sharing Application, and this is an approval of a resolution to apply for revenue sharing for the next two fiscal year cycles with VDOT.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
If there's no discussion, we can vote.
Seven yes, motion passes.
If I can have the floor computer again, please. The next item on the agenda this evening is the presentation of the consent agenda. Item number one is the approval of the minutes from the September 24th, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. Item two is to accept and appropriate the Bridges Grant Program Extension for October 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. The grant's in the amount of $147,168 with no local match. Item three is to accept and appropriate for federal fiscal year 2019, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assences Grant Program. This is a local solicitation award. The grant amount is $28,196 with no local match. The sheriff's office will provide $30,050 towards equipment cost. Item four is to accept the Continental Court in Hermitage Drive in the crossings at Chancellorsville, Section 1 into the Virginia Secondary Street System. This is in the Cortland District. Item five is to accept Monterey Court in Ashley Farms into the Virginia Secondary Street System. This is in the Cortland District. Item six is to accept Wood Creek Circle, Piney Glade Road, Candle Tree Court, and Bridgeview Court in Lee's Park Pod E, Section 3C into the Virginia Secondary Road System, and this is both in the Battlefield and Lee Hill Districts. Item seven is to approve the Betterment Agreement between Spotsylvania County and VDOT for construction of county facilities within the Route 17 project. Item eight is the approval of a contract with Enforcement Video LLC for four REN car video systems for the sheriff's office in the amount of $245,220. Item nine is to approve Task Order to O'Brien and Gear Engineers, Inc. for deep run force main study and pump station preliminary engineering report in the amount of $97,917. Item 10 is to authorize a public hearing to be held in the future for the VCR Trail Extension to Harrison Road and Salem Church Levels Road Intersection. Item 11 is authorize a public hearing on the rollback tax code revisions. Item 12 is to approve the budget amendment and appropriation for Circuit Court Audio-Visual Systems overhaul in the amount of $350,000 from the Capital Projects Fund. Item 13 is a grant application request and authorized agent resolution for FY 2019 in the Reducing Injury and Missing Individuals with Dementia and Development Disabilities Program to enhance the Sheriff's Office Project Lifesaver Program. This is a $150,000 grant with no local match. A grant application request and authorized agent resolution for FY 20, National Rifle Association Foundation for the Sheriff's Office. This is a $17,000 grant with no local match. Number 15 is Isaac Walton League Stream Water Quality Testing at County Properties Licensing Agreement. Item 16 is a letter of support of Spotsylvania Regional Medical Center Freestanding ER. This letter of support is for the certificate of need for a CT scan machine for the freestanding ER. Item 17 is the proclamation for the national domestic violence awareness for the month of October. And item 18 is a request for funding of shared river and stream gauging systems. This is seven localities are contributing $12,214 each towards the total project, which is a total cost of $190,077. And that is your consent agenda for this evening.
Would any members like to pull any items from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull number 15, please.
Number 15. Any others? If not, we can move to the public comment period on the consent agenda. Is there anyone, is there anyone signed up for that or do we sign up for that? Is there anyone here who would like to address the board regarding any item on the consent agenda only at this time? Yes. Okay.
Amy, if you would read the guidelines, please, for comment for speakers.
Guidelines for public presentations to the board. Public presentations are an opportunity for you to present matters you believe that deserve the board's attention. Their presentations are not part of the public hearing. Sign up to speak at each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from you to the Board of Supervisors. They are not forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the provided sheet. Please print. Come to the lecture when your name is called. Clearly state your name and voting district for the record. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you are speaking on your own behalf. If you have three minutes to speak, state the group name. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes to speak. Public presentations shall not be used to address matters, subjects to public hearings, or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. Written comments are always welcome.
Okay. Before I speak, you were taking 15 away from, am I, under the impression that the attorney said that 15 would be struck for the list tonight?
No, sir. They pulled 15 for discussion.
Oh, okay. All right. My name is James McLeod. I think I live in the Cortland District. It used to be chancellor and it was changed. I just wanted to speak on item 15 as an individual and the grant of license for the Isaac Walton League to go to the park and do water testing. I think this is setting a dangerous precedent because there's other groups that like to use the parks, you know, for water testing. And the water testing, to get straight, is a qualitative, where they're looking at the macroinvertebrates in the water to try to determine the level of pollution that might be there. And it's not quantitative, where a certified person needs to come up with the results there, running chemical tests and other things of that nature. So it's a first echelon testing. Boy scout groups, girl scout groups, I know have used the park in the past to look at the water for their merit badge programs. School groups, this is a good place to start, that they can come and meet with their parents and everybody and do a little water testing. Church groups occasionally would like to, you know, evaluate the environment around them. Community organizations, housing developments, and so forth. It just seems to me that all that's needed would be a list of things that, rules and regs that the park has, to check in ahead of time that you would like to do this, get their permission. I don't think licensing is really necessary for something like this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board about any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the first public comment period. Is there a motion on the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
If there's no discussion, we can vote.
Seven yes, motion passes.
Mr. Skinner?
Mr. Chair, what I'd like to do, it doesn't look like we have a real, real long meeting today, so I would like to ask that we go into closed session for legal advice on this number 15.
So would you like to move this item until after closed session?
Until after closed session, we'll come out and we'll vote on it then. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that...
Yeah.
Is that a motion or?
Yeah, it would be a motion to move it until after closed session. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we can vote.
Seven yes, motion passes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, one of the items on the consent agenda was the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October, and I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas in Virginia, nearly 65,000 survivors of domestic violence received assistance from hotline services from domestic violence programs. 23,876 adults and 7,040 children received advocacy services as well as shelter for 6,864 adults and children. And whereas approximately 3.3 million children are exposed to domestic violence each year, children exposed are more likely to attempt suicide, abuse drugs and alcohol, run away from home, be subjected to exploitation and trafficking as teenagers, and commit sexual assault crimes. And whereas in Spotsylvania County, over 1,000 victims of domestic violence sought services last year from Empower House, our local domestic violence and shelter program. Over 10% of them were children accompanied by their mothers to the shelter. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community and throughout the United States and the world. And whereas the demand for safe, affordable housing continues to be rated as survivors' most urgent needs. And whereas Spotsylvania County joins with others across Virginia and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide that are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence, and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in Spotsylvania County. And whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems to transform our communities. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Spotsylvania Board of Supervisors hereby declare October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Spotsylvania County, and recognizes the important work done by survivors, Empower House, Spotsylvania Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Program Office, Spotsylvania Sheriff's Office, community organizations, and volunteers to work towards the elimination of domestic partner violence. Mr. Chair, that brings us to the next public comment period. Nikki, has anyone signed up to speak?
There's no one signed up.
Is there anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment.
Mr. Chair, that brings us to board reports.
Mr. Jakubowski?
Sure. Change up on me this week, go the opposite way. Yes, thank you. I have two things real quick. I would like to ask if the Transportation Committee would take a look at dangerous intersections. We have crash data to look at and see what we can do for safety improvements, continuing on with the red light camera discussion that we had earlier, or other ways that we can look at improving these intersections. Ever since it has been brought up, it's, you know, kind of like when you buy a new car, you notice how many other of that same cars out there. Ever since I brought that up, there have been, just in the past week, I've counted seven people that have run red lights. And I'm not talking about yellow turning to red. I'm talking about a hard red that people are just zooming right through. Route 3, Massaponics at Route 1, and Mine Road have seemed to be some of the worst ones, and 208 also. The other one that I would like to bring up is we have passed a couple years ago, or put together and passed a strategic plan. And while it is a good start, and I think I've talked about this before, it'd be nice to start putting more information in that. I know FRA has just completed a strategic plan for regional economic development, which is pretty lengthy and has a lot of specifics, measures, and goals included in it, which I think is something that we need to get to. Thank you.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. One, I think it ties in with VDOT. Are they slated to come? And brief us again.
Yes, sir. I met with VDOT last week. VDOT is going to be at the November meeting, and then they'll be here monthly thereafter for future meetings. They had conflict of interest, or schedule conflicts for this meeting.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of work going on in the region and stuff, but I'm concerned about some of the subdivisions, and are we not putting enough attention to those? I think everybody probably has the same issues with that. Second one, we did get a, a read ahead on this week about the pay plan. Is there, where is that in the discussion? Or when are we going to bring that up for board discussion? Or is that a closed-door meeting discussion?
It can be either way. The board communication that went out, I laid out three options for the board's consideration. You'll note that there was no recommendation on there. I was anticipating bringing it perhaps for public discussion to the board at the October 29th meeting, or October 22nd meeting.
Okay. Do we have an October 22nd or 29th? I thought we moved it. Or was it going to be moved?
It hasn't moved, we haven't moved it yet.
All right. That's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. Ross?
So I have one thing for VDOT too, and our Transportation Committee as well. And that is, so I don't believe we have a Transportation Committee meeting in October, but the next one, I would like VDOT there, and I think Mr. Jakubowski's points should be addressed there as well. But Route 3 light syncing, it just seems to have gotten worse. I mean, once you get through, if you're heading westbound on Route 3, it's good after going through Bragg. I mean, you really are flying. But before you get through the Bragg intersection, it's at least two to three reps to get through the Carl De Silva and to get through Bragg. And yet the side streets are clearing out in plenty of time. So I know they changed the light sync with the new interchange at Route 3 and I-95, but I would like a discussion with the light sync people at our next Transportation Committee meeting if VDOT can arrange that with our transportation people.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Mr. Benton?
No report.
Mr. Marshall?
I have one quick thing, well, two actually. I did see VDOT, they've started to actually put some motor graders on the side of the road, and actually will do some ditch work now. That's impressive, because that hasn't been done for quite some time. Glad to see that they're doing that. Still a lot of issues that we need to get fixed. My district's full of them. Continue to report them. Doesn't look like they're moving too fast on them. Secondly, I'd like our county staff, if we could, to look into our sign ordinance that we have. I've had some, a constituent send me some pictures of the advertisement signs that are being put out on the side of the roads on the weekends. From, right now, we allow them from Friday until Monday. I think we need to change and put some limitations to them. I've had some pictures of churchyards in front of the church. That's 10 or 12 signs in front of it. I don't think most people, when they go to church, are thinking about buying a 199 mattress. So let's just see if we can't put some more restrictions to it to at least keep them out of the churchyards and out of our medians. The gentleman putting the sign in the median strip, that's dangerous to put a sign in the median strip on Route 3. So if we can just take a look at that and see what we can do to make some improvements to that ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the same issue, we have these flags that are half-circle or long and look like elliptical. Anyway, there's supposed to be two, I believe, per property. And there's quite a few businesses out there that only have, well, have more than two, three and four. And along with the signs that you're talking about, there are no signs allowed on the medians in our policy right now as it stands. We just got to get it more enforced. Thank you.
I have a couple items. I was also hoping VDOT would be here this evening. I'd like to get a speed study done on Smith Station Road. If a study is even needed. I know there have been a number of crashes, including one fatal one involving a motorcycle a couple years ago. The sheriff's office is stepping up patrols, and of course, that's appreciated. I would also like VDOT to look at it. I would imagine that the speed limit is too high to allow for speed bumps, but perhaps flashing signs before drivers reach the more dangerous curves on that road. But if staff can be in contact with VDOT, and I'll also be in contact with VDOT. My other item was also alluded to earlier. On October 22nd, the NAACP is having its annual candidate forum. Several of us here are candidates. So I would like to move that we move the October 22nd meeting to October 29th.
Mr. Chair, that requires a vote on a resolution. We've drafted that resolution. Nikki has that. So she's going to pass that out to put that in front of the board, so it can see what it's voting on. And she's also going to place some copies up there for the members of the public. This moves the meeting from October 22nd to the 29th, and it requires that it be posted and advertised pursuant to law.
Even though you're just now getting the resolution, is there discussion? No one has any discussion? Guess we can vote. I made the motion.
Seven yes, motion passes.
And that's all I had for my board report.
Mr. Chair, that brings us to presentations by staff. The presentation this evening is the 2019 Preliminary End-of-Year Financial Report and Recommended Carryover Request. But before we do that, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recognize Mary Sorrell. Mary is coming up to the front, and she's just going to stop at the podium for me. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Mary is the county's Director of Finance. She is going to be retiring on October 31st, 2019, after more than 32 years of dedicated public service to the citizens of Spotsylvania County. Ms. Sorrell is a lifelong resident of Spotsylvania County. She began her career with the county in the Treasurer's Office in 1987 as the Budget Manager. She's been responsible for countywide budgets totaling more than $8.7 billion from fiscal year 2000 through fiscal year 2020. She developed, managed, and was otherwise responsible for the local government facilities, water and sewer infrastructure, and for sale of more than $850 million par in new money and refunding bonds over those years. She was named the Director of Finance in 2015, and has been successful in helping the county achieve the highest bond ratings from two of our three independent bond rating agencies, and the second highest from the third. And I would personally like to thank Mary on behalf of all the county employees for the service that she provided for the last 32 years to the citizens of the county. And I'd like to offer my sincerest appreciation for your commitment to the county and congratulate you on your retirement as you move into the next phase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Now you can come up and give us a report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we're going to present to you the Fiscal Year 19 Preliminary End-of-Year Financial Report. It is preliminary because we are still actively working with the auditors and the school finance staff to develop the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which we brought to you later this year. We, Bonnie, in a few minutes, Bonnie's going to walk you through a few slides that we have for you. We do have one action item tonight. We are asking for your approval of the General Fund Carryover Request. They total about $3.5 million, all of which are tied to items that were either obligated in fiscal year 19 but not expended before June 30, or were committed or grant mandated. So we need to carry those funds over. So we're going to ask you, obviously, we'll answer any questions you have, and we do need your approval on that budget amendment and that appropriation on the carryover.
Good afternoon. So I'm going to walk through a number of general slides here and then dive into what you generally want to hear about is how did the fund balance end at the end of the year. And all of the slides are related to the General Fund, but there's information in your board packet about the other funds as well. So we'll focus on the General Fund today. Obviously, that's our largest fund and has most of our services budgeted therein. So when you look just at the revenues to the county in fiscal year 19 and the expenditures out from the county in 19, revenues total $278.7 million, with property taxes being 63% of that, at $176.9 million. And then total expenditures and net transfers out are $280.1 million. That comparison, just on that very basic level of revenues to expenditures and net transfers, means that there was a $1.4 million use of the fund balance in fiscal year 19. And again, as I see my note here, I'll reiterate what Mary said. This is the preliminary end-of-year data and is not yet audited. Fund balance net of certain reservations at the end of fiscal year 19 was $73.5 million, less the recommended carryover that is in your packet tonight, and that is $3.2 million specific to the General Fund only. The potential schools carryover, and I will note that the schools' finances are not yet complete for fiscal year 19, but the potential schools' carryover at this point is $3.7 million. So when those two carryover items are reduced from the fund balance net of certain reservations, that's a balance of $66.6 million. How that $66.6 million then is broken down is in the yellow box at the bottom, with the fiscal stability reserve at $50.6 million, and that is equal to the policy level of 11% of revenues. The budget stabilization reserve, you might recall, as part of your work on the fiscal year 20 budget, we did get to, as part of the fiscal year 20 budget and the reservation thereof, of the $5 million policy level. So that budget stabilization reserve has met its max at this point. The health insurance reserve is at $4.7 million, and the economic opportunities reserve is at $2 million at the end of fiscal year 19. What that means is that the amount, that the fund balance amount that is over and above the reservation requirements by policy is $4.3 million. And I do have two asterisks here beside that, and that is intentional, because I do want to note that this year, there is a $1.3 million accounting adjustment in the revenues for unrealized gain on investments. And that's important to the conversation about the fund balance and what's available, because that is not real revenue to us. That is an accounting adjustment for a period of time, the value of certain investments. So unless we had sold those investments on June 30th, we don't actually have that cash in hand. So that's going to be important. Again, it's $1.3 million. So when that $1.3 million that is not truly cash available to us at this time is removed from the $4.3... to us at this time is removed from the $4.3, our available fund balance at the end of fiscal year 19 is $3 million. You're going to see that $3 million on the next several slides. So how did we get here to the $3 million? The first slide starts with the last report that you got on the county's finances, which was at the combined mid-year third quarter report at the beginning of April. And at that time, we estimated that the fund balance estimate was going to be negative, the fund balance position, aside from reservations, would be negative $300,000. And we were going to work to resolve that as part of the actions that you were taking on the fiscal year 20 budget. Since that time, revenues and transfers in to the general fund increased by $4.6 million. And again, please note that that includes the $1.3 million audit adjustment or accounting adjustment. That $4.6 million stems from increases in interest earnings, deferred real estate revenue, which is the rollback tax, and then public service corporation. There are other revenue adjustments as well, but the three that I just mentioned are certainly the largest of those. Please do note that, you'll recall that we took some measures to adjust, in particular, to try to address end-of-year surpluses. We took measures to address personal property and real estate revenue as part of the fiscal year 19 budget. And when we increased those projections at the time, it seemed, it seemed reasonable, and still today, it seems reasonable. But I'll just note that our personal property revenue ended up being $1 million less than we had projected, and our real estate revenue ended up being $400,000 less than we had projected. The fiscal year 19 expenditure savings and transfers out, that performance adds $700,000 to the fund balance because that's a net savings, expenditure savings. And those largest savings are derived from health insurance and also from turnover. Changes in reservations since that third quarter report was a use of $1.5 million, and those are the policy-level reservations, as well as a reservation at the board's direction of the rollback taxes on the solar property. You directed us to reserve those rollback taxes for potential use on a compensation adjustment, and so we have reserved that Also, as part of the fiscal year 20 budget, the recommended budget assumed $800,000 higher as a use of fund balance towards capital projects in fiscal year 20. And when the third quarter report was complete and we had the negative $300,000 balance, one of the actions that was taken as part of your budget action was to reduce that transfer in fiscal year 20 by $800,000. And so that added $800,000 back to our fiscal year 19 position. So again, the estimated fund balance greater than policy requirements in fiscal year 19 is the $4.3 million. Again, note the asterisks. And when we pull out that $1.3 million accounting adjustment, the actual available fund balance at the end of fiscal year 19 is $3 million. So I've done the same thing, we've done the same thing here, but started with the fiscal year 18 ending fund balance instead of the projected fund balance that we had at the third quarter. We're boiling down to the same number, we're just getting there in different ways. So for all of fiscal year 19, compared back to the originally adopted budget, and as I walk through this, I want you to know that a lot of these adjustments are the big increases in revenue and expenditures that are here came to you as part of budget adjustments throughout the year. But when we compare the actual revenue back to the original adopted budget, revenue in fiscal year 19 was $11.8 million greater than was originally projected as part of the adopted budget. That was derived from more than 120 different revenues across the general fund, with DSS and CSA being the largest adjustment. Now, you'll remember that we did do a number of budget adjustments during the course of the fiscal year for DSS and CSA stemming from adoption subsidies, foster care, and expansion of Medicaid as well. And that occurred right at the beginning of the fiscal year. On the expense side, expenditures increased by $6.7 million relative to the originally adopted budget. And again, that's the expense side of those DSS and CSA adjustments that I was just talking about. Turnover, health insurance, and the contingency also being the largest changes there. Changes in reservations since the beginning of the year were $4.8 million, and the budgeted use of the fund balance in fiscal year 20, as adopted in the fiscal year 20 budget, is $5.2 million. Net transfers added, $1.2 million to the fund balance. And so again, here at the bottom, we come back to that final $3 million as being the available fund balance, net of the reservations. So as Mary was saying, the action that's before the board tonight is regarding the carryover. The carryover information was in your packet when the board packet was released. And the carryover process, we do this each year, it's the process through which departments submit requests to carryover on expended funding from one fiscal year into the next fiscal year. The carryover is not meant to be a second mini-budget process. It is not meant to create a contingency with any given department budget, and it's not to serve as a reward to any department for having saved money in one year that they can spend in the next year. That's just not the intent of it. The intent is to allow for the carryover and the reappropriation of budget obligations or other restricted funds from fiscal year 19 into fiscal year 20. So the action needed tonight is your approval of the budget adjustment and appropriation that is in your packet regarding the recommended carryover. Obligated carryover from fiscal year 19 to 20 totaled $1.1 million, or 31% of the total carryover. And then grants or otherwise restricted funding was 2.4, is $2.4 million of the total carryover, or 69.1%. I also am realizing now that I'm at the end of this presentation that there's an important point I wanted to make that I forgot to make on these couple of slides. And that is, we do have the estimated fund balance that's available at the end of the year of $3 million. And a concern that we already have in the fiscal year 20 budget that you need to be aware of is, again, fire and rescue overtime is a concern as it was in fiscal year 19. The overtime budget for fire and rescue for all of fiscal year 20 was budgeted at about $700,000. Through the end of September, that $700,000 had been completely spent, and we are estimating that an unbudgeted amount of $1.5 million additional will be needed through the remainder of this fiscal year as recruits are currently in the academy and they're not scheduled, the full class is not scheduled to get out and into the stations until March. So as you contemplate the availability of that $3 million, I want you to be aware that we do have a $1.5 million concern already in fiscal year 20.
Bonnie?
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Mr. Benton. But didn't last year, fire rescue have like a two-point, something?
Two overtime, off the top of my head, in fiscal year 20 was, excuse me, in fiscal year 19 was about $2.4 million total.
And Mr. Taylor then reduced that down to $700,000 for his budget recommendation? Is that correct?
We made a budget adjustment mid-year to address that issue in 19, but the hope was that when the recruits got out of the classes and onto the, into the stations, that that overtime would reduce. Obviously, there's been additional turnover since those recruits got in the station. So that problem did not get solved last year. And so it is an additional problem this year.
All right. Thank you.
An unbudgeted problem, to Bonnie's point. We need $1.5 million in 19 for that.
Mr. McLaughlin.
So again, that was part of the PACE study and plan. So I guess the question, maybe the chief could answer this as well, is that if we implement the proposed plan, will we see a reduction in that $1.5 million in '20 or what the remainder?
I mean, if Jay's here, he's certainly welcome, but in '20, we...
In '20.
The $1.5 million estimate that Bonnie has projected in '20 assumes that the recruits will get out in March. And I don't think Jay can do anything about that until they get out of the...
No. All I can say is if there is the ability to move forward with that, it may help retain and keep that number.
From increasing?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
The hope would be that it would decrease it for the following year.
So are we seeing the same overtime? That was just the fire department. Are we seeing the sheriff's department, similar numbers, or are we having the same issues?
They are starting to have increased turnover, but we're not seeing the same issues on the overtime. They, given that their schedules are different than the fire and rescue schedules, they don't have the same level of need for overtime that fire and rescue does. So no, we're not seeing the same dollar value in overtime in the sheriff's office as we are in fire and rescue.
Thanks.
Mr. Skinner. Does this, Chief, you might be able to answer this one, too. So if we, we're showing a lot of time of overtime, whether it's a volunteer or a career firefighter, does that change if we go to all career firefighters?
We have enough positions that the stations can be staffed 24/7 with career staffing. So that, we have those positions currently. So the volunteers essentially add over and above that or help us fill in gaps to avoid mandatory holdover, which is mandatory overtime. So those positions are already there. We just need to be able to hold on to those people so that we don't have that turnover and have to basically backfill with overtime.
We ought to come up with a solution, right? That's going to cut overtime out. And that's going to mean probably more personnel?
It's less about more personnel than retaining the personnel that we have.
So that's why we're looking at, and again, we said a lot of things about wages, keeping them here and stuff like that, but we also talked about training, that the firefighters shouldn't be paying for the training. That's something that we could put in their training, which would hopefully keep them there.
Right. And that's what we are doing more of now. I can tell you one of the challenges with that, though, is a lot of that training requires educational leave. And as soon as we let someone off of shift when we're already at minimum staffing, that requires additional overtime to fill that spot.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin.
Chair, one more thing. If we could add to the closed door, possibly have the chief and the sheriff come back for a quick discussion on this. Is that doable?
I don't, I'll take a look at whether or not we can add that. I'm not sure that we can add that for closed session or not. Might have to put it off to the next meeting, but I'm not sure that we can look at that. If we can, we'll do it, and I'll add it.
All right.
Even with a motion call? Could you look at, I mean, if we make a motion to put it on?
No, if we can add it, I'll make sure it's part of the resolution.
Okay.
Well, since we've got the sheriff here tonight, is your overtime increasing, sir? That was one of the questions when you were out.
Yes, recently with the influx of people leaving, I think we've had five in the last couple of weeks. Yes, we're right at minimum staffing levels. And so if deputy calls in sick, or if he has to go on mandatory training and it falls below minimum staffing levels, we do have to incur overtime, and that has happened quite a bit in the last couple of weeks.
Okay. So we have at least looked at some options for increased pay to both firefighters, I believe, and to the sheriff's office.
That's correct.
Is, and what percent? Those pay raises, and again, like I said, with the fire chief, if we make them pay for their own training, that's why some people will leave rather than us producing, providing them that training as far as cost, if there's a cost to it. We just, we ought to come down and get a final plan because this is, ever since I've been on the board, we've had this problem. And two things, I've asked what would it cost to go a full-time career in firefighters, and also what can we do in the sheriff's office to keep these people here? Because it is, it's costing us way too much money. We need to make one big jump at one time and make sure we include everything that makes people want to leave Spotsylvania, go to other places.
Biggest problem we're having right now is we're losing people that have four, five, six years on up to 13 and 14 years. And when we lose those people that have been trained, been well-schooled, and they're members of vital parts of the sheriff's department, like the SWAT team, the dive team, and things like that, then we lose all, we lose so many years' worth of training. Because these are the guys, Mr. Skinner, that make up our FTOs, field training officers, that train all the new recruits. So when we lose a guy that's six, seven, eight years with the agency and he gets a substantial raise from surrounding agencies, we lose a lot, not just an employee. We lose a trainer, and we lose a mentor for the younger deputies. And that's the biggest problem that I see right now is trying to retain the well-trained deputies that we do have. And as we've talked many times before, from the day we recruit until we have someone on the street is almost 11 months. And that's a long time to put an 80, $75,000, $80,000 investment, and then once they get released on the street, if they're looking at going to another agency after we've trained them, that's a backbreaker.
Could we get a list from both departments, giving us what it's going to take to keep people, or whether it's funding, whether it's steps?
I believe, sir, that has been prepared.
I know that there's funding here that we've seen, but is that the only thing? Is it the salary? Is that the issue? I know it's not that way in the fire department.
The salary is the main issue, yes, sir. When you can cross the river and make several thousand dollars more a year, and you're trying to live on a policeman's salary, that's the biggest issue.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Skinner, the proposals given to the board also includes career development within the agency, and that's another incentive for the employees to step up within a grade.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Benton. I guess, I've seen some of the pay plans, stuff, the various options. I'm assuming, this is just an assumption, usually I get hit with this every, I get stuck with it every time I assume something. I'm usually wrong, but I'm assuming both departments would like to see option one. See to nod, yes.
I think we both certainly would like to see option one. As you come down the list, one, two, and three, when you get down to three, that would cause major problems. You would, there was a suggestion to increase a starting salary for a deputy. And the problem with that, Mr. Benton, is that would put a starting deputy above the salary of someone that's been here two or three years. And then you're definitely going to have people leaving after that.
I agree with that.
So option one would be what I would certainly support as the sheriff, and I think the chief and I have talked many times, sir, and that's the way we'd like to go.
All right. Now just, let me just follow up on some, now, did, and I even looked at it when I thought there were some, maybe instead of, I call it chiefs, you know, Indians and chiefs. It was looking like the Indians weren't getting that much, and a lot of the chiefs were getting pretty substantial, especially on the fire side. But Justin, I'm going to give you credit here, but I just happened to hear Justin having a conversation, and it goes back to the gap, the closing the gap with, you know, somebody gets promoted and they're already making more than what a person's already been promoted for, for 15 years or whatever. I guess two-part question. Is this going to be comparable to what Stafford has done already or is doing? And on the, the substantial, I almost used that word, I got to be careful with my words. On the increases we're seeing with the lieutenants, captains, chiefs, et cetera, for both departments, is that bringing them up to Alcott standard pay and taking care of some of the compression issues? Is that what we're doing?
That's the intention. So it does bring us much more in line with Stafford, Prince William, and so forth, especially at the entry-level ranks. Prince William, and so forth, especially at the, the entry-level ranks. I will say that those, those departments top out a bit higher when you get into the, the upper ranks. But we feel that it's in, it's important for us to, to address, you know, especially those people that we're losing, but also provide a, a progression for those that promote through the organization. One, one important part of that, that plan is also, I, I think maybe Major Skibo alluded to it earlier, was the career development portion of it, where for, specifically for the fire department, instead of having essentially a couple of spots that you can move to before you're actually supervising someone, it provides true career progression, developing firefighters who, who may not have a desire, or at least at that point in their career, to take on the responsibility of supervising others on a regular basis. But it does encourage that development of a variety of skills, a variety of technical needs that we have in the department, that right now there really is not much encouragement to do so. So it allows them to, to not only move up in compensation based upon really loyalty, continued dedication to the county, but also as they continue to progress and develop capabilities as far as performance that we can rely upon. So that, that career development portion is a very important part of that. And just real quickly to, to Mr. Skinner, just to, to clarify, we do have a number of positions in the department that have already been approved and funded to provide a 24/7 career department. We, we have that in place right now. The, the challenge is the amount of turnover we have. We need to fill those positions and hold them to be able to provide that level without the overtime. So we feel that with the, the efforts that have been put into developing this recommendation, that we've addressed really most all of those issues, which will then also allow us to put more effort on training and compensating people for such.
Well, one last one. Sheriff, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to add to that, Mr. Benton, that these steps are not automatic. You have to earn these steps by job performance and through your evaluations. So the mere fact that you've been here X number of years is not an automatic increase, and your job performance would reflect whether or not you're eligible for the next step.
As it should. Thank you. And I just learned that we, we are good for closed session. Some of, some of the questions and to staff and stuff that I wanted to be direct on, on hold to that, I would ask that maybe Bonnie and Mary, sorry, if y'all could hang out till closed session, and Sheriff and Chief, if you, if you don't mind. I'm, I'm sorry, just.
Happy to do it.
All righty. Thank you.
Mr. Jakubowski.
Thank you. A couple of questions. If you, okay. You'll, you'll be coming back to the podium in a second. I was wondering about the Evergreen study that we just undertook for a three-year pay increase, and now it seems as though that was insufficient or wrong, or, because, you know, that we just finished it up last year, and now here we are being told that it really didn't do what it needed to do. So could you expand on that a little bit?
I would say there were several deficiencies in that study and how it was implemented. There were concerns expressed at the time, and unfortunately, they, they did not get, not get worked out through the implementation of that.
Very, very well-studied. I, I see where you're going. And, and then this next one is just more of a statement, really for the board. And, you know, we, we need to, we need to come to grips with what kind of a county are we going to be? Because as for long as I can remember, this has been an issue. It has been an issue that we are the training ground for Northern Virginia for whatever it might be, teachers, fire and rescue, sheriff, state police, they just, they just move on. And we have never tackled it. We've always chipped away at it a little bit, but as soon as we implement something like this, Stafford and the northern counties are again going to outpace what we do, unless we undertake a sincere and dedicated direction of keeping up with it. And it's going to cost money. It's going to cost a lot of money. I saw the numbers. I was quite floored by them. And I think that the public needs to understand that, that these are investments that are made in what, in, in my opinion, is number one priority, which is public safety, and then number two is education. As county officials, what we're supposed to do. Stafford County's tax rate is 15 cents higher than us. At least $20 million more a year they have in revenue, just from the real estate tax rate. So if we want to actually go down this road, I want to go down making sure that we complete the mission, and we don't go down just chipping away again and again, because we'll find ourselves right back in the same position, losing people, more overtime, but yet we have spent so much money trying to fix the problem, when we need to, number one, identify what the problem is, number two, come up with the solution, and then follow through and make sure we do it. Because if we don't, we will be right, right at the, at the same spot. I, I will tell you, I hear it from even the education side of the budget, and a lot of people are leaving and, and going to surrounding counties for substantially more money, and fire and rescue. I, I met a gentleman, actually it was nice to hear, he actually left Stafford to go to Fairfax, but making an enormous amount of money more, and he's willing to make that sacrifice to do that. And so if we aren't willing to keep up with it, I would rather not do anything than only do it halfway and, and do it incomplete, because I don't think that that's right. I would rather make sure that we embark upon this and say we're going to complete the mission and, and fix the problem. Now, we're never going to get to zero. I mean, we're obviously going to always lose people. I mean, that's, that's just the, the nature of how it is. And us being at the end of the commuting line, it's always going to be that way. And with them improving I-95, it's going to make it easier for, for people to leave, even more so at that point. But if we don't keep up with what we say we're going to do, we're going to lose even more people, and this is going to be an even bigger problem in three, four, or five years to come. So, but thank you, gentlemen. Look forward to talking to you more in the back.
Are there any other comments or questions? Is there a motion on, on the carryover? Motion to approve for Mr. Skinner.
Bonnie, we're just doing right now, the, we're not including the carryover from schools. Though this is just strictly for.
Just the county's carryover this time. The schools will come forward at a later date with their carryover request. Yes.
Then my motion is to approve the county carryover.
Is there any discussion? If not, we can vote.
Seven yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that brings us to the county administrator and the county attorney reports. Carl?
No report.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have several items. I will make them brief. Spotsylvania County Utilities crews will begin a unidirectional flushing program in the Fawn Lake subdivision and Wine Water subdivisions on October 15th, 2019, and anticipates completion in November, December 2019, weather permitting. Crews will be working Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 3:00 p.m., excluding holidays. Traffic should not be impacted by the process, and citizens can find additional information on spotsylvania.v a.us. I have updates on a couple of the projects that we're working on in the county. The animal shelter expansion and renovation, utility infrastructure work continues, and work on the site is well underway. The judicial center expansion and renovation, if you'll recall, we were having some issues with the schedule. The contractor has provided sufficient documentation to indicate the project is underway. Staff continues to work with the contractor on a weekly basis to ensure adequate progress is being made on the site. Site work continues on the mechanical yard improvements. The courthouse sidewalk project is scheduled for bid opening tomorrow, October the 9th. There's also sidewalk work being performed around the courthouse area that's not part of this CIP project, particularly around Merchant Square. The pavers are being taken up. Some of the sidewalks there are being replaced with stamped concrete. The Berkeley and Tad's Tavern, Todd's Tavern, excuse me, Community Center, there was an onsite meeting held with VDOT, with VDH, and the contractor to identify an approved well location this week for Todd's Tavern. Staff will be working to clear the well site and coordinate well installation as directed by VDH. The Berkeley Community Center will be addressed in the near future as Todd's Tavern progresses. Also, I have an update on the S-Power project. On the utility side, the county has completed cost share documentation and provided the documents for S-Power's consideration. The cost share includes 14,000 linear feet of 16-inch water main, which S-Power will construct. S-Power will pay 2.5 million of the construction cost, with the county paying an estimated 1.3 million. The cost share also includes a $500,000 S-Power contribution to the proposed Fawn Lake ground storage tank, and another 500,000 contribution to this Fawn Lake booster station. Both of these contributions would be due within 30 days of the county's official notice to award for construction. This brings the total contribution being made by S-Power to 3.5 million for the 531 zone improvements, and that is the Fawn Lake zone. Also, on S-Power, the site plans, comments were issued to S-Power on the substation site plan last week. The plan can be approved once minor amendments are made to the BMP agreement. When that's finalized, we received a revision to the 165 megawatt site, megawatt site plan on Monday, which is now currently under review. On the decommissioning estimate, information has been provided to the consultant, so they can begin their review. There are several plats, which are just property lines that are related to the waterline project that have been submitted and are under review. The building permits, S-Power has applied for building permits for two bridges, a substation, and the construction trailers. Comments have been issued on the bridge plans and substation. The construction trailers are currently under review. No building permits can be issued until the site plans are approved. On the environmental side, the 12-inch waterline plan is under review, as well as perennial flow determination to establish the RPA limits for the remainder of the S-Power site. There was a storm-related blowout of one of the silt fences due to the late, the last storm event. That item was immediately brought to our attention, and the next day it was corrected within 48 hours of the report. And that is my report for the evening. That brings us to closed session.
Give me just one second here. All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, this will be your resolution to adjourn and close meeting. This is different than the one that was posted. I am having copies printed out for distribution and for the board's review, but I will read it into the record, so everybody knows what's going on. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn and close meeting for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, pointees, or employees of any public body, specifically employees of the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Management. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn and close meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provisions of legal advice by such counsel, specifically a contract for services and a contract for license rights. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn and close meeting for discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities, and briefings by staff members, legal counsel, or law enforcement, emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters or a related threat to public safety. Discussion of information subject to the exclusion in subdivision 2 or 14 of section 2.2, 3705.2, where discussion in open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or security of any facility, building, structure, information technology system, or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons using such facility, building, or structure, specifically cybersecurity threats and plans related thereto. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2, 3711A, 1, 8, and 19, such discussions may now, may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
So moved.
Seven yes.
In accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Jakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Mr. Chair, that, that brings us to public presentations.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
I'd like to make a motion that Bonnie and Mary bring back on the next meeting on October 29th, per our board communication, that we implement option one, the full pay plan implementation as of 1 January 2020. And that would be the full implementation of the plan after the first of the year would implement, would start to take effect the first pay period after the first of the year.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, so this will direct Bonnie and Mary to come back with the necessary budgetary actions to implement that. Is that correct, Mr. McGlaughlin?
That's correct. Thank you.
There's no discussion, we can vote.
Just to be clear, that's for the public safety compensation plan, per the direction.
Seven yes, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, also as a reminder, number 15 from the consent agenda was pulled, and I think the board was going to take it up after closed session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to table 15 at this time.
Any discussion? If not, we can vote.
Seven yes, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, now that brings us to public presentations. Nikki, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes. Michael O'Beere.
Nikki, can you read the guidelines, please? Thank you.
Public presentations to the board. Public presentations are an opportunity for you to present matters you believe deserve the board's attention. Their presentations are not part of public hearings. Sign up at the, sign up to speak at each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from you to the Board of Supervisors. They are not a forum or dialogue for debate. To make a public presentation, sign up to, on the provided sign-up sheet, come to the lecturer when your name is called, clearly state your name and voting district, address the comments directly to the board, state whether you are speaking on behalf of yourself. Three minutes to speak. State the group name. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes. Public presentations shall not be used to address matters subject to public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or public attacks. Written comments are always welcome.
My name is Michael O'Beere, 11201, Chancellor Meadows Lane. My problem is S-Power. They've, y'all passed the SUP provisions to have them build a solar field beside my house. Right now, they've turned the main road to, to the whole facility right straight toward my house, which means I'll have 100 trucks a day headlights cast across the front of my whole house. This has been going on and been, been harassed by S-Power, been harassed by the former landowners of the property. I just bring y'all's attention. Y'all voted it in. Y'all need to find it to protect the landowners, the homeowners, and the taxpayers of this county from undue harassment. And what's happening now is And what's happening now is just undue harassment. S-Power actually told my wife that, because I was so vocal at the meetings prior to the vote y'all made, that they're not supposed to talk to me and I get what I get. So, this is what I'm getting. I'm getting 200 headlights a day across the front of my house. So far, it's been like 85 trucks a day coming beside my house. And y'all have to need to do something about it. You know, I don't, what, y'all voted it in? Y'all should have provisions in it to protect the taxpayers and the homeowners of Spotsylvania County. That's the problem we're having. I don't, like I said, they told me they're not gonna do anything. They moved the road directly to, after a meeting I had with Wanda and S-Power and their general contractor that to move the road up the hill a little bit to get it away from everybody's house. Well, fortunately, I'm the only house that they're doing this to. It's all beside my place and it needs to be stopped. Y'all voted it in, y'all need to take care of it. Thank you.
There's no one else signed up.
Is there anyone who did not sign up who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Up to the public hearing.
Yes, sir. That brings us to public hearings. The public hearing on the agenda this evening is the budgeting of the 2019 general obligation bond sale proceeds. And we've got Bonnie Jewell here from finance.
Yes, good evening again. Anytime a budget adjustment is going to equal, be equal to or greater than 1% of the originally adopted budget, a public hearing is required. And so, tonight, a public hearing is required in order for us to, in order for you, excuse me, to approve the budget adjustment associated with the budgeting of the bond proceeds. And of course, these are the bonds that you all authorized through your budget and then subsequent to that for us to sell. On August 20th, the county closed on $51.2 million in general obligation bonds to fund the CAD system, the animal shelter expansion and renovation, Company 6 bunk room addition and renovation, the Route 17 widening and bridge, Cortland High School renovation and expansion, and school technology bus replacements and capital maintenance. Additionally, the 2019 general obligation bonds refund, the 2020 through 2034 maturities of the 2009B bonds, and the 2020 through 2033 maturities of the 2013 general obligation bonds. And that refunding results in $3.4 million over the original term of those bonds in interest rate savings. That's why we refund bonds periodically and I'm happy to report to you, we can expect that $3.4 million savings. And that's not in one fiscal year, that's over the remaining life of those bonds. The life of the bonds was not extended to achieve this savings. When we issued the bonds last month, an all-in interest rate of 1.75% was obtained on this issue. And that is, in my memory, I did not go back and check the records, but in my memory, that is the lowest all-in interest rate that we have received in my memory. The budget adjustment that's before you tonight allocates the bond proceeds among the projects that were approved in the CIP for fiscal year 20 for payoff of the refunded bonds and to payment of the costs associated with issuance of the bonds. It also adjusts the general fund budget and the transportation fund budget for debt service to be in line with that expected to be incurred in fiscal year 20 now that the bond sale has been finalized. So, after the public hearing, I will ask that you please approve the budget adjustment and appropriation that's associated with this item.
Any questions or comments from the board? We can open the public hearing? Anyone signed up?
There's no one signed up.
Is there anyone who did not sign up who wishes to address the issue? Seeing none, we can close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve FY 2020 budget adjustments and related appropriations.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, we can vote.
Seven yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
Ed, could you do me a favor? Would you, would you check on that grievance that we just heard? That they're bringing the road right up his, could you check and sort of fill in on us? What did we approve as far as that road goes? Are we following it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you want to email us, that's fine. I just, you know, I know there are some claims out there, but if it is happening, we need to know about it.
Yes, sir.
If it's not, we need to know about it too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Benton?
Just to let you know, Mr. Skinner, I did contact Ms. Palmetto and they said it was within their plans, they're within their scope of work. I also spoke to the construction, I'll call it the manager out there, the guy that is in charge. He had reached out to Mr. O'Beere about whether he wanted a berm, they could plant plants right away, but he was met with hostility and was, Mr. O'Beere did not appear to want to cooperate. So, they've just kind of dropped what they were offering him and gone about with their work. That's what they, at least the manager out there told me and what, I'll take that back, not Wanda, but Ms. Palmetto told me about their work.
Is there any further business? Mr. McGlaughlin?
One last question. Somebody sent me an email and asking about where can they find all the bond posting? Where would it be located, all the bond proceeds and where there's public information on it?
For this current issue or for all previous issues? There is, out on the county's webpage under the Finance Department. I can send you the links, but there are the current year's information on bonds and the prior year's information on bonds. And I'll be glad to send you the link. Okay, thank you.
Ed, you're gonna make the announcement as far as when the next meeting is?
Yes, sir.
Because this is not.
That's next on my agenda. Thank you, sir. And it's my last item on the agenda. Under new business, the next board meeting for the Board of Supervisors is October 29th at 6:00 p.m. This is a change from October 22nd. So, the next board meeting is October 29th here at 6:00 p.m.
And Mr. Skinner, that will be advertised in the paper.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So we can vote.
Seven yes.